All right. Call the meeting order or dispatch with the blood delinquents on the flag because we don't have one. Open a meeting to the public at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so. Close it, close it. The session is ended. You'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting. All half copies for members and any additional delinquents. Motion to accept the meeting. Minutes of the last meeting. Second. Moved by trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by unusual side of eye. Those opposed, motion carried. Bills.
We had two additions this evening. First one is a Holsington Auto Mall. It's for the 2009 Chevy Tahoe with the police department. The amount is $28,557.92. And the other one is emergency vehicle outfitters. That's for the lighting and related equipment for the 2009 Chevy Tahoe. $6,224.64. And both of those amounts will be reimbursed by the community.
I'll make a motion to pay bills tonight as amended. A second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote unusual side of eye. Those opposed, motion carried. Chris Pondets.
The only letter I have is a letter to Mayor Rivers after serving on the planning board of the Village of Ross's Point. As an alternate, I find that I am not using my time in a valuable way. Please accept my resignation from the planning board of the Village of Ross's Point effective immediately. That was John Hutchard. I'm dated September 14th.
I'll make a motion to accept his resignation with E. C. Grant.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote unusual side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay. Report of the mayor and the board of trustees. First thing on my agenda is fall pickup. The fall cleanup days for the Village of Ross's Point will commence on October 26th through October 30th. Residents are reminded that this collection is for pickup of bag leaves, shrubs, and tree limbs less than three inches in diameter only. There will be no pickup of paint cans, tires, stumps, waste, or stones, cement, or wood. Residents requested to bag all these in clear bags only and place some curbside. In such a position that parked cars and so forth do not block the pickup truck. This will greatly facilitate the collection. On that, this will be sent to the press tomorrow. On that, as everybody well knows, the compost area, the area up there has been closed. State of New York on the 16th, I think it's the 16th of October, has put out new regulations on no open burning in the state of New York totally. It's closed because we cannot control it. We just cannot control it. We are working with the D. E. C. Today. They are going to send us supposedly by the end of the week because the guy told me that we had telephonic today on this subject. And he would send us what we had to do, that we could open up the compost area if only. We no longer can take limbs or tree branches. We just can't dispose of them. The sad thing here is, is that that compost area has been there for several, several years. It's been a godsend to the Village of Ross's Point. Sad thing is, it has been very badly abused. We had everything from paint cans to pallets to anything you could take a throw in. And if the D. E. C. came in here at any time and saw that, the village would have been fined pretty hard. I'm asking the general public to bear with us for maybe a couple of weeks here until we can get something concrete. The guy did tell me that there's grants out there to build compost areas. And he says it's, you pay for it and they pay, reimburse you. So we're going to look at that situation. What I see coming down the road is we're going to have some, have to have some sort of bans for composting. I may be wrong, but I, I, I just see that coming. Please bear with us, general public.
I'd just like Brian to explain what we're doing for the, how we're composting leaves and stuff like that so everybody's on the same page.
How, how we're going now?
Yeah.
Is we, it's dumped on the site and then we transfer it to another site. And we have different piles that are cooking that we turn over every so often. We're using the compost as, as almost like topsoil up behind our wastewater plants.
Now, if we took a chipper and we chipped the brush, could we compost that or we just have to use that for like mulch?
No, you can, you can use it when we compost. It will rock. We'll mix it in with the leaves. It takes a little bit longer, but it does work.
But if we dug a pit and we put stuff in and then we covered it, we'll make it cook quicker, you know?
Well, then you're talking man hours. It's really worth it, you know? Right now, we're just, we're just stockpiling it and, and we know the age of piles. So we know what piles we can get into and use. And the files that are just being turned over and cooking. You can go into the pile now and you can shoot steam going right off.
We want the village to look good and we want people to bring the compost over, you know? So we're not against it.
Can you bind it?
Have you, Brian?
Oh, this? Yeah. Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, I mean, we're not, it's not a dead, I mean.
Not a dead item.
Yeah. And there's a big pickup on the set, so. I'll tide us over till we get with the state, so. Looking into it. I know it's not the right answer, but.
That's unconcerning, honestly. I'm just burning within by the D. E. C. They went back fifty years and everybody's going to be burning now.
Look on page two though. It said in towns with a population of less than 10,000, you may burn tree limbs with attached leaves.
Right.
That is tree limbs on their own property.
On their own property.
On their own property. You look at, okay, question 16. Can brush piles be burned at a transverse height? And that's what we were considering as a transverse height. It said, no, the practice of burning wire piles of brush collected from local residents at a town or county transverse height is prohibited. I'm going to tell it that, hey. Anything the D. E. C. is weird, weird.
Some of this stuff we're going to have to go bury later. We can't burn. I mean, it sounds weird, but tree limbs and all that, we're going to have to bury.
Well, we're going to, we're going to go around and chip what we can.
Chip what we can.
You really can't bury stuff.
Arrest is going to have to be up to the local landlord or?
Yeah. Or run out the bay.
All those. I think, I think bumper, we need to get after our county legislators because county law enforcement more won't take a brush or anything. And, I mean, they're, they're tying the hands of the residents everywhere.
They're no warning or anything, just a shock around and look. And say, the six months it will be no burden. It says today. Actually, we got it the other day. It was dated the 14th.
14th effective date?
Yep. We got it the day before. Come here.
Yep.
I'm sorry. Can't see. Ah, that's better.
So what you're saying is we, we have to hold tight till you tell us what we, till the village tells us what we can do then?
Yeah.
We can't burn, but we can burn. I mean, they want you to burn in your own.
You can burn, you can, you can burn in the Village of Ross's Point.
Right. So, but it's saying you have under 20,000 you can burn, but we have a bit law, a banning law for that, so we can't burn anyway. But you're telling us just to, when you say your clippings and stuff, I mean, we can put out like olive flour and stuff and cuttings that we've taken down. They'll take all that. But they won't take tree, a limb.
They'll now take limbs up to three inches.
Yeah, but we can, now they're going to chip them. That'll go along, so.
Over three inches we can.
And they have to be in clear bags?
Waves and stuff supposedly.
Not the branches.
Bags are bags. You know, bags.
Well, that's what we're going to put in the trash or this.
We always put clear bags so you don't.
What about those bags? No, I'm just saying, somebody, let. Somebody has a bag with, that they buy, that you could buy at Walmart. It came up, those brown bags that they put them in, their leaf bags. You can't, you can't put those out?
Well, the reason why we say clear bags is so that somebody doesn't throw paint can and empty paint in.
I bow to God. There's no paint cans.
They've been through this.
Hard to believe because all the people I know that dumped up just their clippings. I don't understand.
I think it's hard to believe, but just give you a, for instance, two weeks ago Saturday, pickup truck up there. And I took the plate number down. I heard I didn't recognize it. And Chief of Police checked it on Monday morning. Guess what it was from? Mariah. I mean, they've come from all over and dumped here.
But you mentioned something about putting cameras up there if they do.
Well, that's, it's coming up tonight. So anyway, I hope that you understand that the board is not out to crucify anybody or anybody else. We sympathize and we're going to try to work, work around this thing. I lost it. Okay. All right, destruction and extension of moratorium on internal lit signs in zone C1 area. We have that moratorium that's expiring and we need to extend it as confirmed with the. And I, I would hope that they would because they have, you know, we have, in the past four or five years, we've stopped all that. Well, that's supposed to be put in that code. And there's a committee that's supposed to be working on that code.
On the planning board.
What?
The planning board.
Yeah, because we have a moratorium on that. But the moratorium that's expiring, well, what this does is going to add, just extend it a year.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion to extend the moratorium by the lit.
To have the attorney do it up in public forums, that they will have to hold a public hearing.
So we'll advertise for a public hearing to extend it here?
I need a motion to do that.
I'll put that in front of the motion.
I'll say.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote unusual side of eye.
Aye.
Okay. Security cameras. We got the second proposal today. Right? And now we have two proposals on it. And we probably haven't had time enough to go over this. Because this is the first time I've seen a second proposal.
I think we should have a meeting and go over it with the superintendent. Is he satisfied?
No. I might suggest that we have a special board meeting just on this subject. Right? And invite both of these people to the board meeting. And one at a time, have them discuss their words to us. So that we got a better idea because just don't tell me too much.
What's the figure of the second proposal?
Well, on the, on the one for composting is 7,900. And the one for the rec center here is 10,942. And the other proposal I don't have with me, but it's almost the same. I think it's 9,000 each. The other one.
Yeah, it was nine.
Nine, something each, 9,611 dollars. So we need to have them people come up. We do have, I think, considerable amount of money in the budget for this. We may not have a total, a total amount. We need to sit down. I think, Brian, we have a special board meeting. Doesn't have to be on a Monday night. It can be anytime, it can be during the day. We join, we advertise it.
Maybe we could afford to do one this year and then one next year maybe. Now, we went, how much money? 10,000 on this?
No.
Was it a couple of?
About 14.
We won't need it tonight, maybe. In the special meetings?
Yeah. Schedule a special meeting before that. And maybe we can have Mr. Bingle attend it too because he's done involving us. What's a good time for everybody? A good day.
Got to go in the paper, Brian. Can't do anything till next week then, right? Got five years before.
That's a public hearing. We're not having a public hearing. We're just having a special meeting, so. You can hold that anytime, really. It's better if I have time to advertise it so that nobody, you know.
27th?
What day is it?
Tuesday.
Well, I think we should have a meeting, have Brian look over the plans. I think we should have the guys come together for the presentation. We'll make a choice at that time, then we'll hold a public hearing to go forward.
You can do it, what you can do is decide what you want at that point. Then at the next board meeting, if you want to, just make your decision at the next board meeting, you can. You can decide then who you want to go with.
That would be Monday, the 2nd of November.
That's right. We'll make the final decision at that meeting.
Tuesday to 27th, all right, guys? What time? What time are we going?
Too early because I think I got a shed service that day too.
In the morning.
Yeah, in the morning.
Morning.
10?
10 is fine. Tuesday to 27th.
Upstairs at the village?
Yeah, that.
Where do you want it? Where do you want it?
I think we can do it upstairs.
That's court date. Wait, that's court date. We probably have a lot of interruptions.
I think we'll be fine. It doesn't matter.
Well, make Bingle to be there. Brian.
We can hold it down here. I don't care.
I just have to know when we advertise it. We can hold it here.
Hold it outside hall. We don't have a planning board meeting.
It's not going to happen again when we do a meeting.
I'm not one to throw blame around, but.
Okay, next thing on my agenda is to authorize sign the contract with Melvin Bejor for the bandstand. We do have certificates in charge. We're all set. This is no cost to the village other than we're going to have to pick up the cost of the stone that we put in. That's it.
Stone and our wiring too.
Wiring. And the wiring doesn't have to be done today or exactly, you know, in the later time.
Buddy, you did the wiring.
No, he needs it. He needs it a little sooner for his power tools, or?
Well, yeah, we've talked to him about that. And he isn't that far from that board. He, he, you know, he's worried about, but we're not going to run special power over there. We've got power there.
There's power at the, at the, because he's.
Yeah, we know that. He talked with Brian on that, but he asked him if he could run something because his dual.
You were there, then I get, you finished up with it. Did you agree to run power for him?
Well, we talked about.
It's not 220, it's just 110.
Right. We talked about what the voltage was and that.
Yeah.
We hook up stuff for all the, the bands and stuff. That's a lot more power than.
He spoke with Brian on, he requested that, you know, they could run something just over so he could run his duals.
Run my heavy lead corn. I mean, like a number 10 lead corn. You got no Lois Rock. It's not very far. It's right underneath.
I know where it is.
So you, what's the dimensions on this?
Excuse me?
What's the dimensions of the stage?
All right, it's going to be 34 by 22. Yeah, it was 30 by 20, but Marvin's going a little bit over on it. It's going to be 30 across and deep it's going to be 22. 34 across. It will have vinyl siding. I left pictures of the stage for all the board members. It'll be vinyl sided on the outside with tungen group pine boarding inside, on the ceiling and on the walls. And then pressure treated on the floor. This is just a rough draft, just to let you know what we went by. That's a stage up at Cernac Lake. And we just took it from that and then the committee met and we went from there.
How much money are you short on a little bit or?
That I have to talk to jury on. It's not that much now since we started out. The, the total is going to be 19,000 something. And we had the grant, which was 13.5. And then since then, we've had donations like the American Legion has donated 2,000 in the fire department. The Legion Auxiliary has donated Woodmen of the World, so. Yeah, different organizations, so we're close. We're maybe a couple thousand if that off. That's it.
If we put something in the paper, we can get that wrapped up.
Yes, I'd like to make that known tonight, whoever's watching this at home, that we are going to be doing the stage and that. And if they want to send in donations, just make it to the Village of Ross's Point and put what it is, you know, for the stage. If they'd like to donate for it, it would be a big help.
All right, need a motion to sign the contract.
I'll make that motion to sign the contract tonight.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's it for me. Do attend tonight.
Okay, trustee Jefferson. Nothing on my agenda tonight, you're right. Thank you.
Uh, yeah.
Other is? I didn't get the second page.
It's in your, um, not, uh, quote for the S10.
Oh, okay, so I didn't get this. I was in this morning.
A suggestion. Dead leg. Needs a second quote. He doesn't have it. So just, we just did one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to cable the quotes for the S10 repairs until we get a second quote.
Moved by trustee Jefferson and multiple, multiple seconds. Seconded by trustee Cooper. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote unusual side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. That's it. Brian?
That's it. Thank you.
Trustee Baker.
We had Mr. Garrett, Civic Center today. We had that final walkthrough of the contract to the city and stuff. Let's have a crew down next week to finish up the cleanup. That's it.
Get a whole little money back.
It's already been held back.
We still owe that 1,000.
Yeah, and I told him today that he ain't going to see that for another month at least.
That's good. The break is a lot brighter.
Might give him the list of things that he had to do and a step ladder and bring him back.
Took longer than we thought.
Yeah, but. It's up and running. It was on time.
The cool sticks are better.
Hopefully, everybody enjoys it this winter.
We're a long hard fight.
Yes, it was.
That it? Trustee Baker?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Trustee Cooper?
The only after report is he met with the people, the financial, the insurance system, our send, we all attended the meeting. He explained it to us. I got extra books for you guys, put in your thing. Take a look at it when you get a chance. Just stick the, the center column here. So when you go in there, you'll see the center column. You see the whole prices and how much they're going to raise and things like that. So if there's any questions, she's going to come back and give us some of the seminar on that. And what we're going to plan on doing is meeting with the million people on it. So everybody gets a look at this before we do anything with it. That's all I have.
You got that, Brian? You got that?
I'll take it. I'll take it. Everybody's box.
I was in this morning after I saw you about 10:30. I didn't get back, so I'll get it for you.
Okay, except probably your.
My box.
The one thing that came out of it that really made my day was that the state's going to charge us 13% tax on sure does not.
State is broke. The federal government's broke. What time they put spend?
Well, you know, if you wouldn't spend all that money for the government, whatever your salary.
He's retired.
Year for year, going for the whole mess.
All right. Is that it, John?
That's it.
Thank you, trustee Cooper. Carol?
Nothing.
Our send.
The only thing I have is Brian asked up with the security cameras. We budgeted 9,194 for the Civic Center. We have 15,750 in the budget. A total of 24,260.
Oh, we got plenty of money. Very good. Okay.
I might want to add too, in that meeting, that they're looking, hopefully have more former numbers out of November 2nd.
Yes. Going up to 16%?
16. Something. That's a projection. That's not.
I saw the final figure.
This is not the dead heat. This is just a projection.
When they came up for the retirement?
Yeah, retirement's going up. Everything is going up. Anything else, our send? Open the meeting to the public at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so.
We have something to say.
Go ahead.
The treadmill, the tread, tread, treadmill, those, the guys next door in Marina.
Yeah.
Now, who's in charge of this planning board?
Planning board. We're not in charge of it.
Oh, they tell me the village board's in charge of.
The village board appoints the planning board. End the conversation. We have no input.
That's another. They harassed this guy unreal and they're saying they're not. This is really counterproductive. This guy, this guy wants to put all kinds of money, all kinds of things in this building. Yeah, but he's, he's a little scared.
Oh, no, baby.
Yeah, and, and, and if you appointed him, you probably should get rid of some of these people. Put somebody here with some brains.
I don't know how we can do that without to check with the Congress of mayors on this one.
But you can eliminate the whole, the whole board.
There you go.
I don't think we can.
And I'll eliminate them.
We'll show you again.
We gotta have them. No, wait a minute. We got, by state law, have to have a planning board. That's, that was brought down on.
These people, these people are very counterproductive. They were written a little new music house. They put a sign up there and he was working hard. It's probably not right, but it's probably. What do you got to say about the sign? There's none of their business. And, and they've taken over and like you're like a communism almost. You do this or shut your mouth. And this is not, you ask Ray, do breathe on street, $1,000 on his rental because of that belonging. So you want to really, you really, somebody's got to stand up here and really give these people one good kick in the butt.
Color of the roof was supposed to be a different color.
Big deal. He paid for the damn thing. He should be up with yellow with his stuff. This is the United States of America.
More business, you got a natural business, you know that.
This guy's going to put a restaurant in here and everything. And you guys, and this, and I went to this meeting and I'm kind of really humbled that he had to go to this meeting. They didn't apologize to him or nothing to say we made a mistake and we're not going to do it again.
Can I ask a question?
And I hate saying names, but. Go ahead.
Um, I just want to know, are, do all villages in the state of New York have to have a planning board?
All villages, all towns and all cities.
So every town in the, in New York state has?
Mandated by the state.
Mandated.
Who pays the planning board?
They pay.
Or volunteers. And do they have guidelines that they need to follow?
Yes, and then we've sent them to school. John was on the planning board.
Yeah, that was cool. Hard to get people to volunteer.
This is not right. They harassed this guy.
I wasn't there, so I can't tell you what happened on.
Yeah, and they should have stood up, said, well, you apologize, do you get it? You know, you can make mistakes. Nobody's perfect here. And just say, we're not going to do it again and we're here to support you. Everybody in that building was for them. The, the, the planning board should have stood up and apologized. They should have did.
Did you say that?
Yes, I did. Yeah, I, I, I told them. But you'd think they would, you know, they like, well, we're running the world here. Well, it's not proper. I mean. It's a very nice new building in this village, in this village, and it looked like he could borrow money yesterday. You know, and you guys, and I'd like to make a motion that we give them a tax break for about three years or something. It's a new building. This guy put some money, let him put some tools in there, hire some people. That's, that's what I would think. If you guys really want to do something, that's wrong. These are good people.
It's discouraging businesses to come into the village.
And they're very smart people. And you know, instead of harassing them, we should give them a tax break and really. These people have stayed here, they need this community. His anchors like that. He's got very original ideas. And he, he treats the people nice and he's honest. You know, have you ever heard a guy word about that man?
I have.
Well, I like what he's done, but, oh. So, we gotta really show that we care. If you do, give that man a tax break in that new building and have that planning board apologize for the, we made a mistake. Do what you want. He overbuilt that building. Go look at that building. I went in that building. That's a super building. That's not a chicken building. I don't know how much money he got in there. Sorry, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not? I'm hoping for a German.
Wish you for a German.
Maybe I'm off page. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper, and it is court date. We'd have had a record if we had got started.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, guys.
I'm gonna shut it right now.